Good morning, Your Honors. My name is Kevin O'Flaherty and I represent the applicant for further appellate review here, Avalon at St. Clair. Seated at counsel table to my right is Mr. Thomas Erbalis, who represents the municipal defendants but who will not be addressing the court this morning. Your Honors, we're here because the appeals court made two errors in reversing a summary judgment that the trial court entered in favor of Avalon in a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit case. The first error that the appeals court made was ruling that claims, mere claims, without anything more, a diminution of property value is a legally cognizable basis for standing to challenge a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit.
Can I stop you there?
Yes, Your Honor.
If evidence is submitted to support that claim, would that be a valid basis?
I say no. And I say the reason for that, Your Honor, is that the basic principle of standing in 40B cases and in 40A cases, under the Bell case that this court articulated, is that the same standing requirements apply. But that means that the same principles of standing must be applied. The primary principle there, the bedrock principle of standing in these sorts of cases, both under 40B and under 40A, two different statutory regimes, is that standing is determined by an inquiry into whether a plaintiff has alleged and ultimately can prove a harm to an interest that's protected by the statutory regime from which the permit issued.
Is any one of your clients a direct abutter to the property in question?
Those would be Mr. Caffrey's clients. I'm here for the developer, Your Honor.
Didn't the trial, try to strike that, the motion judge say that, I'm reading now from his decision, "The sole affidavit evidence offered on behalf of the plaintiffs as the issue of diminution of real estate values were struck."
Yes, Your Honor, it was.
So if they were permissible struck, there's no evidence in the record that would even support that.
Right, there isn't, Your Honor.
Contention, because the rest of it is theoretical and it's taken care of by 40B.
Well, not to argue the appeals court's error here for the appeals court, but that is what the trial court said. The appeals court said, didn't matter that it was stricken, that the affidavit was stricken because the plaintiffs didn't have any burden of proof there. And that gets to a second question, which is the second reason that I think there's error here, and it's a significant error, because what the appeals court has done in this case has basically overruled Marotta, Valcourt, and Cohen, cases which were all good law, on how a defendant in Avalon's position is to, if you will, rebut a rebuttable presumption of standing. And what the appeals court did here was to say that, in contrast to Cohen, and the Cohen case is a case that was decided by the appeals court, but this court refused to take further appellate reviews, so have to assume that this court found what the appeals court did there was proper. In Cohen, the defendant in my place, in my client's place, took the deposition of the plaintiffs. In those depositions, the plaintiff said, even though we've alleged all these terrible things, we don't have any proof, but we're abutters, so we can rest on the presumption.
May I ask you this? Where does the Sigronis versus Board of Appeals of Wareham case fit in?
Well, the Sigronis case, Your Honor, I think fits in in the first, in what I would say, the first error, which is, do claims of diminution of property value constitute legally cognizable bases for standing under 40B? And I would say, because Sigronis is not a 40B case, Sigronis is a 40A case, as Your Honor knows, there's some language in Sigronis that the appeals court, in a footnote, I think footnote four of Sigronis, where the court writes, Demetrius Sigronis said his view of Buzzards Bay was going to be inhibited by the property that was the beneficiary of the variance, and accordingly, his property value was going to be diminished. And they latch on to that footnote, and they say, see there, diminution of property value is a viable basis for standing under 40A. Now, I think that's wrong, because if you read that footnote and then also go back and read Judge Cass's decision, which was the underlying decision in Sigronis, what you'll see is that the standing of Sigronis was not based on a claim of diminution of property value. It was based on Sigronis's complaint that he was living next door to a property that had been granted to variance that would allow the property owner of the abutting property to overdevelop the property. In other words, develop to a density not otherwise allowed under zoning. And Judge Cass was very careful, and he said, that's the basis of standing here, and that's got to be right, Your Honor.
Do you think Sigronis is wrong?
I do. Well, I don't think it's wrong.
There's a substantial segment of the bar that practices in this area that thinks Sigronis is wrong. And maybe this is the opportunity to either, not necessarily overrule it, but maybe what you're just saying is enough of an effort to sort of cabin it in.
I think Sigronis needs to be clarified. Sigronis needs to.
That's a good way to put it.
Could I ask you something, put it this way? It seems to me there are certainly times when harm to the interests that are protected by 40A, will them, like, you know, it's going to block somebody's view, you know, because it's the variance that's allowing them to build something too high, it's now going to block their view, that's a protected interest potentially under 40A.
Potentially.
Potentially. When those things happen, it is not uncommon to see a corresponding diminution of property value as a result.
Yes.
But that the diminution of property value is the result of the other thing.
Absolutely.
We should focus on that original thing.
Its derivative.
And the fact that property diminution of value flows is.
Immaterial.
Immaterial. Stay focused on that. But just make sure I understand you, your argument about 40B, as I hear you saying that we don't even need to address some of the complexity that has grown up around 40A, because we can look specifically at what are the interests being protected at 40B? Is it consistent with the local needs? Are there health and safety problems? In other words.
Yes, Your Honor.
Just look at those, and save for a 40A case, untangling perhaps some of the.
And that's precisely what the trial judge, motion judge said.
That's right.
40B puts a whole new perspective on this thing.
That's right. It's a different statutory regime. You know, if the legislature wanted 40A and the procedures of 40A and the substantive law of 40A to apply to 40B, they wouldn't have needed to invent 40B. 40B was invented as a parallel, as an alternative, to zoning.
To bypass some of the problems of 40A.
To let back in through the back door what the legislature has thrown out through the front door is what the appeals court has done here, and that needs to be corrected. I would say, my argument is precisely as you said, Justice Sussman. First of all, the basic bedrock principle in standing cases under 40B and 40A is look at the statutory regime from whence the permit issue. A plaintiff has to allege and prove harm to an interest that's protected by that statutory regime. If you look at Chapter 40B, which is in appended to the brief, there wasn't a word about preservation of property value. And how could there be?
Didn't the trial judge say the method of determining aggrieved person's status is the same under Chapter 40B as under Chapter 40A?
Yes, and I don't disagree with that. I'm saying that. In fact, that's what, he's quoting the Bell case there, Your Honor. And yes, the method is, the principles are the same.
Okay, all right. That's the distinction you're making.
The legal principle is just what I articulated to Justice Sussman.
Because 40B projects, almost by definition, are going to be large.
They are, Your Honor. They're going to be multifamily developments for the most part.
Multifamily, multi-income, this one is fairly large.
And they're going to override local zoning, which is the whole point.
So you override local zoning and.
That's its purpose.
That's its purpose, as this court has said repeatedly and most clearly and definitively in the Hanover case some 30 years ago, that this is, to then import a 40A substantive analysis here is to do violence to the statute.
Because 40B is designed to get rid of these NIMBY complaints, or issues, I should say.
I think what 40B was designed to do, Your Honor, was to increase the stock of affordable housing in the Commonwealth, to take away.
Yes, and make it easier to do that by reason of comprehensive permits and to avoid NIMBY suits.
And to eliminate from the affordable housing development effort the exclusionary zoning practices that had grown up in the Commonwealth, where cities and towns were using bulk, dimensional height, and those sorts of zoning restrictions to zone out, if you will, the kinds of projects you're talking about.
And also to eliminate somewhat, perhaps, untenable standing requirements, so the projects could be held up for years and mortgages fall apart and rates go high and the whole thing disappears because it's in litigation forevermore.
This is precisely the problem with the decision that the appeals court.
I mean, if you look at the history of the statute, I'm sure it must say that in a report or something.
It does, Your Honor, and again, this court's Hanover case does a very exhaustive review of the statutory history and the purposes behind the enactment of 40B.
So your real problem with the appeals court decision is the sense, as abutters who claimed at least one valid basis for standing that was not rebutted.
That's my first problem.
All right, right, that's the initial problem.
That's the number one.
Okay, but if we gave you that, then you.
Then I think if the court said diminution of property value isn't a legally cognizable basis for standing, the appeals court erred here, then there should be a reversal of the appeals court on that issue, and that means that the trial court's entry of summary judgment would stand. But I think there's another equally important issue here that the court needs to fix, and that's with regard to how one, in a 40B case and a 40A case, I don't want to argue more than I have to here, but it has a ramification for 40A, how one rebuts the presumption of an abutter. And what we did in this case was, we didn't just stand by and do what the defendants did in the Watrose case and the Marinelli case that the appeals court relies on. Those cases stand for the proposition that when you're dealing with a plaintiff who has a rebuttable presumption, the defendant, the developer in this case, needs to come forward with some evidence. The defendant can't just say, well, I contest the rebuttable presumption in my answer or in my affirmative defenses or in my motion for summary judgment. I speculate that the abutter couldn't prove standing. It's our burden, if you will, to come forward to rebut the presumption, and we did that. We did that by going out and taking discovery of all the plaintiffs in the way of, by means of deposition in interrogatories, in which the plaintiffs who said, we have a laundry list of complaints, we said, fine, what are they? They laid them out, we said, well, what's your proof of any of this, other than your own personal speculation?
And at that point.
Zero.
Right. At that point, the presumption is gone, is it not?
Well, that's my position, Your Honor. It's gone when we took that deposition testimony and those responses to interrogatories and we put them before the trial court. That is evidence. If I was at trial, I could take those responses to interrogatories and read them right in. I could take the deposition testimony and read it in.
I mean, don't the cases say that it's gone, or do they?
The Cohen case certainly does. The appeals court says, we overrule Cohen. By misciting Cohen, they say, in this appeals court decision, Cohen stands for the proposition that it is not enough merely to make a motion for summary judgment to rebut the presumption. I would agree with that. That's not what Cohen says, however.
So you think, in this opinion, they overrule Cohen without saying so?
They said so. They said, we cannot follow Cohen as we did before. And Cohen, by the way, is exactly our case.
Well, I take, I mean, one of the concerns that I had, and I understand why you went out and took lots of discovery, but the whole purpose of 40B is not to place on developers in those communities, which, for whatever reason, have not provided for 10% of low-income housing. I mean, was to streamline, to.
Expedite.
To minimize, to minimize the cost, to expedite. And so, in a way, I understand why you get into your second point, which is that once you limit the bases on which somebody can claim to be an aggrieved party, as contemplated in 40B, even within those, you still can't do it on a mere assertion, correct?
That is true. You can't, once that assertion has been challenged and evidence has been put forward by the defendant to rebut the presumption. The Cohen case is very careful about this. The Cohen case says, the evidence that was put forward in Cohen was very, almost exactly what we put forward, which was the deposition testimony of the plaintiffs. The court in Cohen said, that is not dispositive on the issue of standing, but that certainly is sufficient to shift the burden back to the plaintiff. And how could it not be, Your Honors? Otherwise, you have created for abutters a mechanism to totally avoid Rule 56. They can just rope-a-dopus all the way to trial.
In essence, what you're, and that's why I wrote it, is the appeals court has changed the burden of proof as to who has to come forward, I mean.
A presumption has to mean something. A presumption, in a statute, has to mean something.
It does, it does. What the appeals court has changed, I believe, and wrongly, is how one in the position of a defendant in one of these cases rebuts the presumption. And the appeals court has put a standard that I would say is contrary to the established law, overruled cases which are still good law.
They make it almost an irrefutable presumption.
Exactly, Your Honor.
Which it was never intended to be.
Of course not, otherwise you've eviscerated Rule 56.
You'd have trials in every case.
You would. You've basically, as I said, created a rule of absolute standing for abutters, because abutters can do what the plaintiffs did here, respond to our discovery and say, we don't know how we're harmed, we don't have any specific evidence.
I take it that what's really at the crux of the appeals court's decision is what the appeals court seems to be saying, and I would agree with this, if the plaintiffs come forward and make certain claims, now limited to what's permissible under 40B, and the defendant, developer, comes in and says, those claims lack merit.
Yes.
Nothing else.
Right.
Not sufficient.
That's not sufficient. Never has been, Your Honor.
So they are literally correct, that's not this case, but they are, the appeals court is correct to this extent, to suggest that on summary judgment, it is sufficient merely to dispute the plaintiff's claim of standing.
I would agree with that articulation.
And then to say, and to show that plaintiffs have no evidence to support their position. That's the piece that you say, come on.
That second part I don't agree with.
That's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
It's that piece.
That's enough to rebut the presumption. Otherwise, I mean, just think about a Rule 56 situation.
How do you do it?
Right. And then you're left, as a developer of one of these things, to shoot in the dark at speculation and conjecture.
Well, I take it, what you came in with was what you would characterize as the plaintiff's admission that they had no evidence.
Absolutely. That's right. Which is admissible, which is evidence, and is evidence sufficient to at least rebut the presumption, I would say, and that's always.
But if they had evidence on one of the sort of permissible bases and you had contrary evidence, that's a trial issue.
That's a jump ball. Go to trial. That's right.
Standing issue is, we hit beyond standing to the merits. What you got is clearly permissible under correvocatus. You pointed out they have no proof.
It's right.
Mr. O'Flaherty, one last thing, because I just, I mean, I think what the appeals court was really trying to do is mesh its law with our law, and that's a good thing for the appeals court to be doing. You don't disagree with their proposition, the Watrose proposition, that in order to rebut the presumption of standing, Avalon, assuming that you're in the light category, Avalon was required to offer evidence warranting a finding constantly to the presumed fact?
I agree with that.
Yeah, of course.
And I think we did it.
Exactly. So what the appeals court is saying is Watrose is essentially saying, our, the Supreme Judicial Court's decision on Watrose is incompatible with the Cohen decision, you're saying, no, it's not.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you, Mr. O'Flaherty. Mr. Caffrey?
Good morning, Your Honors. May I please the Court? My name is Andrew Caffrey, Jr., and I represent the abutting plaintiffs in this matter. This is a very important case, particularly in terms of standing. The discussion previously has been about Chapter 40B and its purpose and so forth. Chapter 40B clearly was an attempt to streamline the process, to the so-called one-stop shopping. However, to require plaintiffs to have standing under the protections that 40B seeks, the issues that 40B seeks to protect, will stand, the concept of standing, on its head. As this court decided in the planning board of Hingham case, a municipal board is not a party who can, who is aggrieved under Chapter 40B. Chapter 40A and Chapter 40B are very distinct on this. Chapter 40A allows municipal boards and officers to be parties aggrieved. I suspect that the legislature under Chapter 40B, when they were trying to do the one-stop shopping, said, well, we don't want the zoning board to be approving a comprehensive permit and then have the planning board saying, we don't think it's good planning. So there's a very important distinction in those two statutes. Also, as this court knows, that if a statute is clear, the statute should be followed. Chapter 40B specifically says that a person, an aggrieved party, may appeal to the court as provided in Section 17 of 40A. This is an unambiguous legislative directive. There was talk earlier about the legislative scheme. You have to look at the entire legislative scheme, and the entire legislative scheme regarding zoning includes all of the traditional reasons why plaintiffs are entitled to standing, particularly a butters and a butters to a butters. If we adopted Mr. O'Flaherty's opinion on this, then there would be no checks and balances on this.
Well, no, you could, it seems to me, someone opposing such a project can articulate something that is an interest, to be protected by 40B itself. The permit's got to include consideration of, you know, health and safety. So if there's health and safety concerns, you can raise health and safety concerns. Promotion of better site and building design in relation to surroundings, you can raise issues about that. Preservation of open space, you can raise issues about that, but what you can't, if you can articulate harm involved to your clients from that. But it seems odd that they would pass a statute whose purpose is to override local zoning and local zoning requirements, and then let someone challenge it by saying, I'm hurt by the fact that local zoning requirements are being overridden and therefore this building is, you know, whatever, too high and blocking my view, or whatever. It just seems.
Otherwise, I believe we're giving the zoning board unbridled discretion.
No, you're not. You're saying, take, for example, the traffic. If you permit, if you have a neighbor, if you have an area that is zoned for three-acre single family, you know, it doesn't require any imagination to know that if you put up an apartment building, that traffic is going to increase. So if somebody says, traffic is going to increase, as one of the harms, and, you know, when traffic increases, the likelihood of automobile accidents generally increases, and so on and so forth, you know, pollution generally increases, of course it's going to generally increase.
That's right. But in terms of the areas that are sought to be protected under Chapter 40B, how is a neighbor's concern about the safety of the occupants different, in particular, to the neighbor as it is to somebody else in town?
Well, if the proposition is, I don't know what the, you know, the incidence of bad people in the population is, but if you have one neighbor living next to you, the likelihood of that person being a bad person is less than if you've got 300 people living next to you.
Right, but remember, standing has always required the abutters or the people seeking to establish standing to have a particularized injury, to not make them private attorney generals. And so, the areas of concern of 40B, I don't see how a neighbor could have any particular injury relative to those areas. These are areas of general concern, safety of the residents in the project, safety of the.
So you're saying those are or are not the basis?
I'm sorry, what?
You're saying those are or are not the basis to challenge the 40B permit?
Well, if we take Mr. O'Flaherty's argument and say that, in order to establish standing, you must allege an injury to something that is protected by 40B, well, if you look at 40B, it talks about the safety of the occupants and the project, it talks about the safety of the residents in town. How can any individual in the town have a particularized injury as to that?
Well, if you're closer to it, you know, with traffic, if the design has this huge thing where, you know, cars are going to be not only there in large number, but going very fast, and the rest of the neighborhood is full of kids, you can say.
And there are no stoplights.
There's a problem for us. But what concerns me is, if you're able to bootstrap into the substantive issues in 40A, then, for example, you can articulate, well, the fact that they're being, that they're not going to have the right setback, you know, harms me. And the whole point of 40B is to not subject them to setback requirements. How does it make sense?
Well, I think what's being confused here is the standard for standing and the standard for a decision on the merits. Standing is a very important element that allows somebody with a particularized injury to say, wait a second, I think the zoning board abused their discretion here, and I'm asking a court to review this.
Right, but the injury has to be within the scope of what that statute is designed to advance.
Well, I don't think it's that statute. If you look at the Massachusetts Association of Insurance Agents case, it talks about the entire statutory scheme, the entire regulatory body of law, not just the particular statute. That case went and looked at all of the, you know, it compared particular, the particular statutory point with other statutes regarding regulation of insurance and what the insurance commissioner could do.
What do we do with this, for example, on the problem of traffic and safety, criminal safety? You got the presumption, which goes in your favor, but they go out and they file interrogatories, and at least according to the judge's decision, the answer comes back from two of the plaintiffs who asserted safety, Powers and Saint Amman, to the effect that we talk to the police and the police tell us if you have, you know, more people living in a high-density area or a big apartment, multi-use project like this, multifamily project like this, there'll be more car thefts, vandalism, and drug transactions. Now, we know that answer is no good, because it's pure hearsay, so that's, and the judge said so, so that's taken out of the case. Isn't the presumption gone at that point, on that one item?
Well, I think this is an important point. People can have various concerns, and as the cases say, they have to be more than conjecture, more than mere speculation. The plaintiffs in this case had more than conjecture and speculation. They talked about traffic, and I think, I think.
But where is the admissible evidence on traffic in those two interrogatory answers?
Well, it may not be on Powers and Saint Amman, but Mr. Mark Koo, who lived right next door to it, talked about his, how difficult it is to get on River Road presently, and what a change it will be.
Mr. Caffrey, I understand that. I really understand that. And in a way, it's summarized on page 17 of your brief, having this nine-acre site home to 115 families rather than six families shows actual perceptual harm to the appellant's property and privacy rights. That is because, I think all of us understand, that if you have one house on three acres, you're going to have a different kind of neighborhood than if you have 115 families living on three acres, but that's the purpose of 40B. And so, I think when 40B talks about standing, of course there's going to be increased traffic. Of course there's going to be increased traffic, and so, you have to show that there's something about this traffic pattern, perhaps, that is, that doesn't have to do with increased traffic. You know, your clients, as I read it, said there were unacceptably diminished levels of service at the intersections. I mean, that's why you have traffic inspectors, I mean, that's why the 40A permitting process, you have to point it out, but of course it's going to change the quality of the neighborhood.
That's right. And these neighbors, abutters, are presumed to have standing, and if they can, if they allege that reasonably, then the defendant has to come back with some evidence. Now, in the Sigronis case that was mentioned, the cell tower going up, the developer actually put in evidence that, from an expert witness, that the property value of the plaintiff would not go down. They did not seek to do that in this case. We clearly alleged a reason why we had standing, whether it's traffic. I even think that integrity of the zoning district was a reasonable basis for standing.
But that runs directly, I mean, directly counter to what the legislature has said.
Well, no. That does not justify a basis for turning down the project, but it gives the plaintiffs and the abutters a reason to justify their being, asking a court to review the process. That's all we're asking. Standing is, standing gets the plaintiffs in the door and gives them an opportunity to challenge the discretion that the zoning board has exercised, and I think that's very important.
That is going to send to trial every single 40B permit.
I disagree, Your Honor. This is a very expensive, very difficult process for neighbors. I think you're finding very few of these cases being appealed, but it is, you know, we have these corporations who, they're not looking at the 25% affordable, they're looking at the 75% luxury. Let's be real.
But in a sense.
That's right, but the legislature also could have specified.
Mr. Caffrey, in a sense, what the legislature said is, you don't have to have 100 other units if the town will provide the 20 low-income units. This town has known that for a long time. If you don't have 10%, you're going to be vulnerable to precisely this, because the legislature, its policy was designed to encourage somebody else who will come in and do it.
Yes, but there is a process, and there is supposed to be public input, and we're hoping to get good projects. This does not mean that every bad project should be approved and should not be challenged. If this court recalls, remember, the zoning board in the first go-around turned down this project.
Let me ask you about that, because.
That's fine.
The zoning board, as I see from your brief, made a number of findings, including that this was not consistent with public safety for a variety of reasons, distance from fire station, density, right, create obvious problems with fire and inability of various vehicles to get there in a prompt fashion. Those are findings of the zoning board, right?
Yes.
Was that part of the record in this case that the trial court considered as evidence? as evidence of public safety?
Absolutely.
And the project changed, correct?
And then it went out for mediation, the project was downsized.
Absolutely. And that's exactly what it's designed to do.
And, but it didn't make, put the project any closer to public safety.
But if we, if we accept-
The project is still rural in a single-family neighborhood.
If we, excuse me, if we accept your argument on standing, the whole thing, it becomes sort of ridiculous, because doesn't there have to be a relation between the interest that confers standing, that gives you standing, and then what is adequate to defeat the permit? Otherwise, what's the point of granting standing, just so that you'll be thrown out later on?
These people, the abutters, have a particular injury different from the rest of the town. And, and all the stat, all the, the case law on this has said, "You prove that particularized injury, then you have the right to challenge it and have a court review it." This is not a blank check to zoning boards to just approve any project, bad projects and good projects. And this is the checks and balances that we've always had in this country. These abutters have a particularized injury, they're different from me on the other side of town, and they should be entitled to have a court review this and determine whether, in fact, the zoning board abused its discretion or not.
But haven't you agreed with the Chief Justice that the purpose of, of forty B is to overcome these types of objections?
No, it's to streamline the process. That's what it's for. It's not to give the zoning boards a blank check.
No, but they, but it does, it, it streamlines the process, but it includes, under certain circumstances, the overriding of what would otherwise be absolute prohibitions in the zoning law.
Well, that goes to the merits of the case.
And, and it does seem odd, if the, if the zoning board itself, you know, can't, can't enforce the interests of forty A because zoning's being overridden, that the abutters can advance the interests of forty A. Why would you take that power away from the zoning board and put it in the hands of the abutters?
You're simply giving the abutters the chance to challenge the process. Otherwise, there is nobody who can challenge or bring before a court. I mean, the legislature said you have the right to appeal, but this, this right will be basically of no value if this court takes this position.
But they can if they make the requisite showing.
It will be, but it might be able to-
Again, if you think about the requisite showing of what is, what is protected under forty-
B.
B is the need to protect the health or safety of the occupants of proposed housing. Now, how can the abutters have any particularized injury as to that versus the rest of the town? Or the residents of the city of town? Certainly, a court isn't going to say, "Well, Mr. Abutter, you're in a better position, the zoning board and the other municipal boards to make that determination." To preserve open space, how, you know, where is the particularized injury? I mean, to, to, to do this will be to eviscerate the legislature on this and to completely give zoning boards a blank check.
So you're effectively saying that you're entitled to at least an appeal-
Yes.
On, on this project, just as if it were submitted under chapter forty A.
Right. And that's what it says. You're, you know, impose the same standard requirements of appeals, I'm sorry, you take your appeal under forty A seventeen. And this, this court has decided, has considered this case in Bell and, and decided that it was the same standing requirement. You'll be overturning the Bell case.
Mr. Caffey, let me ask you this. I, I don't want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, and I certainly don't want to box you in, but, but as I listen to you, because as I said, if you put a hundred and fifteen-unit building into a, I don't know, is this three-acre zone or one-acre zone?
It's one-acre zone, Your Honor.
Either, you know, substantial zone, it could be three-acre zoned. If you put, if you put that project next to any abutter, whichever door you try to go in, it's going to have a significant impact on that abutter. So at bottom, you're saying, "Any abutter to one of these projects is going to have standing to challenge, correct?" Because I don't see anything here that is different from what would naturally flow from a hundred and fifteen-unit building or a hundred-unit building or ninety-unit building.
I don't think that's the case, because if they had proposed twelve units or twenty-four units, I think they could have gotten expert opinion to say, "No, that's not going to devalue these properties.